We have the prayer and the pledge. Everybody bow their heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for this wonderful day and for the freedoms we enjoy in our great nation. We pray for the men and women in uniform, both past and present, who provide at us with these freedoms with their many sacrifices. We pray for your guidance during tonight's council meeting, help us how to use good judgment when making decisions for the community we serve. We pray for the sick, that they may be healed and comforted in. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, since we met the last time, we've been through a lot with the fireman's convention, which was a success, and the relay to life, which they did very well considering the weather, and we've been through the flood. Going on, while I roll call.
Kraski?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Beverly?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
John?
Here.
Hart's absent.
Yes, he will not be there. Approval of the June 15th regular council minutes?
I'm going to approve.
Mark Haberman is to approve the June 15th minutes. Do we have?
There is a slight change. I had given you a copy of it. First federal didn't quite like the word that I gave them, wording for the signers at the bank. They also wanted stated that the clerk treasure will remain on all accounts. Is that so?
Okay. So you are putting that change into the minutes?
I would like to.
Okay. Mark will include that in his motion to approve the minutes. Ron Beverly was second. Roll call please.
Bart?
Yes.
Jones?
Upstate.
Kraski?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Okay, going on, approval of the bills? Everybody had a chance to look at?
Kent? Any questions about the bills? Except, I see we're watering sewers, the guys tested, do you know if anybody passed?
They're taking it again in November. It'll be the first time for Jimmy. Steven Allen went in May, down to Columbus. They didn't pass that one, so we'll try it again in November.
My question would be for Dewey Landscaping. That $676, is that for the backyard?
No, that was for the tree work up at the bank. All those trees got sheared off, and so they had to replace.
And well, that service is just water, says 9:30, highest really low in fact.
That was chlorine issue with the water plant itself. They had to come in and swap some parts, so.
So were the 9:30 probably low?
Yeah, I'm not sure what that means. It was chlorine.
Okay.
Which one?
Part related, ML tech services. They had to do some re-wiring and swap out some parts.
9:30 high, what?
We just took the information, not what the invoice said.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I was just curious.
On the back page, it's got steel electric, fire, building repair. What was that?
No idea.
They found some gutters along the park side.
What?
Gutters?
Gutters.
No, that wouldn't have been there.
Oh.
Steel electric, just here at the middle.
Oh, it's getting electric. They rewired the lights upstairs because they were connected to the fans. You have to have fans on to get the lights to turn on.
So we approve the bills?
Okay, Ron Jones makes a motion to approve the bills. Second?
Second.
Mike Barr, second. So roll call please.
Beverly?
Yes, Mayver?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kraski?
Okay, in your packets, you have the minutes from the planning commission meeting. Does anyone need to speak to that? If not, we're going with any reports. Mike, do you want to speak to your?
Yeah, I can. A couple. Um, do you think you can get those minutes and thank you Diane for typing the minutes up for us? Committee got together, as it just says in the report, about looking at some rate studies, both on water and sewer side, base fees. We talked to Roberta about grants and different things for the projects coming up. We had to talk to her about the local survey we did for the half a million dollar grant that, you know, Kit, Mom and Valley was working on that, but we're not getting the numbers back on that like we thought on the second time go around for the mailing, so we need to discuss that too. So that was a good meeting with Roberta. She's throwing some numbers around, looking at some different scenarios of where we can maybe add, take away, kind of thing. We also had a water sewer, but me, Kent, and Ron Daniels visited the Tippmanns in Fort Wayne to talk about the Antwerp Drive property, get them involved in the plans, and they looked at the engineering reports and everything. So he had to get with Stan Tippman, he had to get with his family, talk about it. He didn't have really a big problem with Diane, a couple of questions, nothing major, but he wanted to talk to his family about what we're asking for, so.
So they were receptive, is your impression?
Yeah, and they had talked to their grounds manager or facilities manager, Mike. He had, remember, talking to Larry in the past about this whole project, so they were very receptive to it. You know, they had a couple of questions, concerns, and, you know, I didn't get a call from them. We went last week, I believe. But it's a nice meeting with them.
But if they are receptive, then the next step is to, we want to push ahead.
Exactly, exactly. And I asked them, you know, I can't remember with the total language, we were getting a couple of different scenarios, but what we were asking for, for that 35-foot strip along there for the swells and everything, we were coming up with either an acre to two acres ballpark, but they wanted to, it's like they said, they were receptive to the plan, but we asked them to get back with us. I asked for donation, but that's going to happen. I'll go with the cost of that property if they're willing to, so.
I did get the acreage from Adam, and I passed it on. It's 2.1.
2.1 acres?
Do you think, now I haven't seen any prints, I've just been told what's coming down through there with 15 catch basins. Do you think that's going to work? How is it? Explain to me how that's going to work. You just answer me first.
Do I think it's going to work? You ask me personally? You know, we spent money with these engineers that come up with the plan, they did all these studies. We spent a lot of money over the course of, I know you, you know, we listened to your plans and your concepts, and we threw those back at Adam, and, you know, I know Kit and Ron both had reservations about the project. Do I think it's going to work? You know, you spend that kind of money with somebody that has the knowledge, the engineering, and the...
But they don't have the responsibility when it's done, does it?
True, but we have a lot of problems with engineers with the responsibility when it's set and done.
Right.
We have concerns. We've been talking to Adam, you know, Kit called after we left Tippmanns.
I mean, were they here last week and looked at the water that was down towards Ant where every field was flooded, every ditch was full? Where are you going to put that water?
Right. That water wasn't, I said, we talked about it, you know, I come down to your place. Well, I hope it works, absolutely. You know, we spent a lot of money with these guys. We've been looking at spending a lot of money down the road with these guys. If it doesn't work, it's going to be a light food of bad taste in our mouth with these kind of projects. All these projects are built for a certain amount of rain in a certain given period of time. We talked about that. If we have above and beyond, we could put a brand-new storm sewer line in a certain area of town and separate it to a creek or a detention pond. If we get above and beyond that level, we're in trouble. And every town that builds something like that is in trouble.
But I'm told that we're only dealing with a 10-year rain event. My God, we've had 15 10-year rain events this year.
We talked about that.
We need to build for far greater than 10 years.
Well, we've had, we've had several, probably 50-year rain events in the last five years.
I just understand why everybody's against a detention pond. Detention.
We're not against it. We're not against it at all.
Well, we saw something in the council news that the engineer said a retention pond was not needed on 49, but there was no explanation as to why he said that.
Right.
That's what I'd like to know.
Well, we spent more money on the studies, okay? They did further studies on the four airplanes along, you know, through town and map things and pinpoint certain things. And this is what they're telling me. I'm not an engineer. You know, we rely on their knowledge and their expertise along with Kent and Ron, and Ron, you know, they have background in these kind of things, for these plans. But like I said before, and this is, this is the hardest part about this whole job. If you spend all this money and time and energy on these projects and it doesn't solve a problem at a certain given period of time, we're in trouble. We look bad, you know? And we go back to the engineers.
We waste a lot of money for nothing.
Exactly. That makes me sick. That's not something I want to do. And I want to, you know, they said a 10-year, I talked to Adam, you know, after it happened, I told him how much rain we had. He had no idea, but the whole Northwest Ohio got pounded with rain, you know? He did not know that we had that much rain in this town at that time. And I said, "Look at the meter. You know, we're paying for that every month. We got a bill." I said, "You need to take that into consideration," and, you know, we were talking about possibly changing the plan down there to maybe add more water to it, because there's other projects with that plan that we said we could do down the road, leaving some of the water off of Spencerville and other places at federal at a given period of time. You saw what Kleins does usually, and the church. You know, if we can pull that storm water in there and add that to the project, you know, I think that's what we're looking for long-term. We're not looking just for short-term, but long-term projects with that. Again, when you add that to an engineer, it costs more, and the construction costs more, so.
But I share Ron's concerns. I mean, just based on the saturated ground and based on the four and a half or five inches, four and a half in my gauge, a swell isn't going to help that problem out at all because the, everything was flooded. I drove out in the country. I tried looking in the creeks and the ditches and the bridges, and the water was up to the...
And for Antwerp, every field was flooded and the ditch was full.
So I don't know that a swell is going to solve that problem even remotely.
Right.
I'm still thinking, and I'm not the engineer, but had we had some kind of a way to capture that water before it ever got to that point?
Before it got across the road.
Yeah, and I don't think we would have captured it all.
Yeah.
I think that, I think a retention pond probably would have been close to full anyway. I don't know. It was my friends we got. They were at the hospital, but they aren't that big, but the same thing with that swell down there. It was full silent. At the hospital? Yeah, down there too.
Oh, when you, when you, we call them, we call a low grade is a swell. We need to ditch. I did a little history search on the Old Mill Creek. We never had floods down there on that end of town when the Old Mill Creek was in.
And it filled back.
And it got filled in. And we, and the concept of 15 catch basins coming down to that field, and we all know, if you drove around the country, you know what was in the catch basins out there. Corn fodder and every other thing that came out of the creeks.
Terrible, yeah.
So who's going to go back through that field and pour down rain and clean those catch basins off?
Woodburner was bad.
We need open swell, or an open ditch, and...
Well, and I'm not even sure they helped out in this mess last week.
If you, and I, there's probably something to Google it, but the farther you lay a ditch back, it's unbelievable.
They have more capacity, but that's what they, that's what they said about the hospital ditch too, the way they laid that back.
That's a little thing. That thing's small.
Well, I'm just saying, they terraced it off the farther out there, and that was supposed to hold huge capacities of water. Well, that was flooded. I don't know.
I can, you know, I ask this, Ron, if you have, you know, questions about that plan, I mean, you can call. Adam's receptive to those, you know, I know Ken's called. I've had ideas. We talked about your ideas last year about changing those plans.
Let me ask this, is the retention pond out of the question?
After their studies, and he just said this when I called him to check in on things, he said, "We don't need it now. We don't think we need it now with the way we're going to do everything, and now we don't need a pond. It's going to collect enough through those catch basins, and a big enough pile underneath there should handle, like you said, a 10-year rain event."
Where's the tile going? Do you know, have you had a idea where they're taking it?
Straight to the sewer plant.
Huh?
Straight to the sewer plant?
Oh.
That cuts across the road.
How bad was that ditch at the sewer plant?
Overflow.
It was full?
As I tell you, if it was overflowing, I don't, I didn't go over and look because I was busy elsewhere, but that new pipe that they put in a year ago or so, that was taking water all the time it was there. All the time it was taking as much as it could handle.
And that goes straight to the creek?
And that goes straight to the creek.
Straight to the ditch?
And we pumped out of the street before they got there with their pump, which was, if I wouldn't have called Mike, we'd have been flooded, because nobody was going to do anything.
Nobody was around.
Nobody.
Well, we were around.
No, he wasn't. You wasn't around nowhere.
Ken got the guys out.
He went and got, called you and got you out of the house. And they come down, what time did you get down to my house?
I don't know what time the guys got there, but we were out other places. It was more than just Oak Park. I guess I was well out there without leaving the house, but we were out and about.
Well, he did, in respect, he did call in extra guys, okay, and the fire people.
They should have been in there.
Firemen stood up huge, you know?
Firemen helped the hospital.
And, you know, I know the situation, I know, and I can sympathize with it, and I know these guys are working hard to try and do something. I feel like you. I think there ought to be a retention pond, but I'm no engineer. You know, people like Ron, Ron Beverly and Mike were working on those.
You know, I just said, they didn't say they weren't going to do it. I don't know whether...
But I know Antwerp Drive is the priority.
Antwerp Drive is the problem. We wouldn't have had any, all that water gushing down the street like a river, all coming from over beside Connie Hosteller's house, coming through Silers, running.
Right through you.
And it didn't go into the new big ditch that they did, was coming around the street like a, like a river. Four hours after it quit raining and we...
That got full, over there, that got full, but it come around, but the big one going to the creek.
You can take a canoe down through there.
It kept coming, going good, but it couldn't keep up. But that water comes across from Connie over to Silers, because I drove down there. I was down there when...
It doesn't start at Connie, so let's clarify that.
Well, but where it comes through, it's not like it's a flooded area. This is a designated thing, 14, 15 feet wide, that comes down through there. When it comes through Silers beside his house, it's about four feet wide and about that deep. And if we cut a ditch in back there, on top of what we're going to do out towards, towards Slattery Farms, whatever it used to be, is now.
Behind Schmidt.
Behind Schmidt. If we cut a swell there and took it to the creek, we'd stop it before it got there. They talked about that, what, two years ago? About taking a ditch between back Silers and going around along the edge of the Tippmanns.
I remember that conversation.
They talked about it.
I pulled right up in the, back water up to my stepboards on my Explorer, and I go back and forth watching it come down and seeing where we could take it and what we could do with it. And it did work.
Well, and the plan, the plan as it exists right now doesn't address at all the flooding that occurs to the north of Silers backyard, which is...
Yeah, it was all full back there.
Well, and it was full days after everybody else was dropped. And the current plan doesn't, is that right, Mike? The current plan does not address that.
Nope.
The swell he was just talking about, Ron, was if he went far enough down there on past Silers down there, it would take all that away.
As long as it had someplace to go.
Yeah, as long as you had to fall to go.
Well, we're talking about, the creeks aren't full.
The creek, Oak Creek. I don't know what it was at the sewer plant, but where the bridge is on Clummer, that wasn't false.
I didn't go out that way.
Only room for more. So I mean, without here at Dairy Delight, that whole field floods. It's running through the Dairy Delight's restaurant. You walk over there to the school, and there's only about maybe a foot of water in that ditch. With the pipes so small it can't get across.
So it goes across the room.
Yeah, it just comes on over the top and away we go. There's, there's things that, I've not seen any prints. There's things I hear, I know from being an old man that has been in the construction industry since I was a kid in this town, digging in this quicksand this whole town sits on. I know some things that those guys sitting behind the desk, using common logic, it's not going to work. There's a lot of things that you can sit behind a desk and design, per stats that are given to you in some book, but when you come to a quicksand village, it's not going to work.
A little bit like your GPS you was talking about.
Exactly, exactly. Well, and we need to go out and do some of the things we can do ourselves. We haven't moved in that many.
When was that water committee? How many years ago has it been that we had that water committee, and we was at every council meeting, and nothing but that big ditch coming through there? That and regular rain takes care of everything.
If it don't come from 49, that pipe will handle any water we get, I guarantee it, if we don't get water from 49.
Well, Mike, have you, Ron's got a good point there. You think maybe we should talk again to our, you know, you have a plan. Obviously, there's some contention whether it's going to work or not. We have spent a lot of money, but how far out do you think we are before we'll see something happen? On Antwerp Drive to get rid of some of that water, to stop some of that water from going across Antwerp Drive? Gets into Oak Park.
As soon as we decide if that's the project we need for that area, because right now we have it, we have a plan for that area. We don't think it's going to work, so we can go back and say, "Do it for a 25-year, do it for a 50-year, we want to stop all that water." Take a look from the other side of the road, we got some lowland areas.
Let me ask you this, Mike, and then I'll shut up and we can move on. They're going to charge us every time we go back and buy it? It's another plan?
Well, yeah, you know, that would be, well, every...
The world told them that we just wanted a 10-year plan.
I heard that the other day. That's, I, you know, I just heard that too, when they said 10-year.
Yeah, you said that the night, the first I'd heard it.
That's the first I've heard it.
They must have just brought that in on themselves.
Well, at this point, if it was perfect world and everything was going to work perfect, let's just say his plan was, I said, I had my dead... We'd still be to the point of not being able to do anything until we get, I think there's going to be four or five easements in addition to the property we have to buy. And I have no idea, if everything was ready to go tomorrow, say to Troy, I don't know how long that process would take. So I can't say six months, eight months, 10 months.
So I was referencing some of the, some of the smaller projects that we, as the villages, the village itself can do.
The sewer guys did take care of that one weird problem. I forget, I think that was on X3, X, somewhere off the neck of the woods. The other ones I don't think are things we can go out and do. Well, that one's a catch basin reason, and we've been going around working on tons of catch basins and man.
Like out there on Maple Lane, pulling field tile out of that thing. There was a few of them that we discussed two or three, four months ago.
Oh, well, you got to ask that. We can't do Haber.
Where we at on, where we at on easements and stuff? We got it done?
I've got a message into the survey here, but back Maple Lane Drive, we got to have, we got to do something with that farmer's field tile.
Take it out of our catch basin.
Well, but what do we do with it? Well, see, I don't know. I'm not an attorney. I don't know what you're saying.
And trust me, I'm sympathetic with farmers, and especially as we feed this water into these creeks that's going out to the country and going out in their fields. I'm sympathetic with them. They've got crop insurance. A whole lot of people that live in this town don't have flood insurance. Who can afford it? But...
Well, but you got to be careful you don't make it worse. I'm forgetting them out of our system.
We cannot allow 160 or 180-acre farm to drain into our village. We just can't.
City fathers did 30 years ago.
Yep, and I know, that's 30 years ago. That 160 or 180 is coming into our village and going through our sewer plant.
You cut field tile when you buried my old house.
Well, but anyway, I guess back to that.
We didn't fix them either, did we?
The original...
I keep waiting to have a sinkhole in the backyard.
The original...
It would be on that field.
The original problem out there was that field kept flooding out the people at the end of Maple Lane Drive. So that's why the city went ahead and tied that farmer in knots. Based on, nothing written down, that's just based on, if you want to call it old wise tales. So if you take that out, which is going to help use our gun line tremendously, which would help further down tremendously, what's going to happen with whatever we do with that farmer's field tile, will we start flooding Maple Lane Drive out again, then they'll be...
If you take that farmer's field tile...
Well, we're going to run it, so.
Well, you don't have any options.
Or who's running?
You're going to run it down towards the hospital if you're going to allow it in the town. There's also a creek right over the hill going the other way.
Well, I don't know. He's got his field, I mean, that's all unknowns to me. But I don't think we can just go out.
We need to get him involved, say, "Hey, pal, we're pulling this out of our catch basin. It can't happen."
That's getting into Troy's territory.
Because I don't know.
Well, I think the priority right now has to be what we're going to do with stopping water from going to Oak Park. You're working on that, obviously.
I could talk to Adam, tell him.
I understand.
They're sending a bigger plan for that area.
You aren't, you weren't, they aren't happy with that, but to me, I think we talked about this a couple of years ago, like Tom and Sandy said, that, and I don't know who owns that property in behind Jim where all that water lays, but to me, it would be an inexpensive fix, and I'm no engineer, to get that water and get it over to the creek somehow, without spending a ton of money, and stop the water before it gets to Oak Park and relieve some of that pressure. That's just my sense. Tom and Sandy, you guys would be just as good a judge at this as I am, but when I think of the times that it's flooded the worst, it's either been when the ground has been so saturated and then we get a heavy rain, or it's been when the ground has been frozen, then we get a heavy rain. How do you address that with an engineer who has no idea that those are the serious events? The last two...
But there's an easement that goes right behind them houses, I think, because the power company's got a line that goes down through there. So there should be an easement that you could put a swell in, I would think. Now, not behind the houses. I don't know who, Silers owns some of that, and I don't know who else owns the rest.
They've got a law field down there.
Yeah, so I know it's...
Something that you can...
That's rather the Tippmann, oh, that's part of Tippmann Farm. We don't have an easement.
We'll leave it with the committee and Kent? And get along the entrance.
Yeah, but I don't think we do. And he was, that's part of that strip of land we're supposed to be looking at buying, for him to fit this in.
Yeah, that's his land.
Just, just, quick, they're working on five different projects right now around town, the engineers are. Not just the Antwerp, of course, Ogen, part of Pearl, you know, there's five different high streets. So it's not like we're not doing anything or they're not doing anything. Trust me, I won't be the first one. I won't break ground tomorrow if we can. I've done this a long time.
Sure.
Which I want to be, I want everybody in this room to work on a long time, so I will give them a call tomorrow.
I mean, I'll...
Will you come out in the council news, what you found out?
We'll make sure you know, okay? We'll call you on the right phone number.
I was going to say, I'll give you my cell.
Okay. Is it the right time?
Did you keep water out of the house? Did you have water in your house this time, or you kept?
That far from getting there. If they had have been a half hour later with the pump, we'd have been there.
And I mean, that pump, believe it or not, I don't think the pump had ever been used before, because you bought it for that reason.
I moved a lot of water.
It worked, it moved a lot of water.
Forty-five minutes, we was six feet away from my house. That's how much water that pump had.
Well, I think $35,000 of the tax dollars of the community bought that. Is that how much it was, or is it more?
I thought, I thought probably around 50, but I don't know.
It was 30.
But it really did do the trick. But we came from the lake, because of course we were up there, and we came from the lake when we found out water was starting to stand and coming across 49. There was no signs, no barricades, no nothing. Water's still in Oak Park in front of our house.
Every tom dick in there started to come down and drain, and then splash water up.
No, no barricades set up anywhere down there whatsoever, and all these nutty people, it's got to go out and drive around and see how deep it is.
You know, people like that. Every time you get on the grass, walking, trying to blow that water back. I'll see, I'll see.
But I mean, barricades would at least stopped them and made them turn around, I would have hoped.
No, because we had home street club, that trailer park flooded away again. Shaw Terrace flooded away. There's a lot of places, I know you don't want to hear that.
I know there was water.
No, I'm not saying.
And we had stuff up, signs up. I was on Antwerp Drive with... And we had stuff up, signs up, I was on Antwerp Drive, with high water, whatever, people were driving through, forty-five miles an hour.
People are nuts.
I don't understand what that does.
And it just makes...
They was on the other end there with a couple of things.
Well, the next time, if that happens, let's pray it doesn't, but maybe we'll have Jake Baller out there writing water tickets.
I think we ran out of signs and barricades, didn't we?
We had everything.
Everybody did.
Well, I guess while we're on, we do, we talk about the pond, get that out of the way. Pond on South Avenue. 'Cause that adds to that problem, too.
Can we close, can the village legally close this pond?
Well, I'd have to take a look at it, but that's been there forever.
My entire life, yeah.
Well, see, it's no different than that farmer's field, 'cause that lets Hyde Street into Arthur Street, which backs up West High Street, backs up Shaw Terrace, eventually backs up Spencerville and Antwerp.
How deep is that pond? I don't know, I've heard a lot of war stories about that pond since I was a kid, Thomas Barrett in there. I don't wanna drain it. I make a big attention, pond, out of it or something.
Well, it seems, you know, yeah, it's been there a long time, but look at all the changes that have happened in the village, in buildings and everything else, that wasn't here when that pond was originally moved on.
That's probably out in the country. It's probably out in the country when it was...
Probably.
Yeah.
Well, see, that's really...
And that's going way back, but there wasn't nothing, anything around there.
Person that contacted me about the flooding, I guess, what do I get back to him? I'm gonna guess.
Let me do some...
What's it do, does it flood everything down there, or what? There no place for water to go?
His overflow ties right into the Arthur Street sewer, which wipes that and Shaw Terrace out and wipes out West High Street, and it just works its way down. 'Cause we seen his fish go through the manhole. They do, I mean, I'm not making that up. I'd love to get him out of the system, but I don't know where he could run his discharge pipe to either, or his overflow pipe. Let's tell the guy we're looking into.
We got a mountain of dirt, we could make the mountain disappear.
Oh, that's a flooding problem.
No, the other mountain.
I'm not sure if it bought it after Mel moved.
Oh, it was Mel from the hospital.
Yeah, it's where Mel lived, but that was there long before Mel bought it.
I can't think either, I ain't...
Originally, it was Tussis, and that's what they called him, Tussis.
Yeah.
McMillan Pond, so we always called it grown up. Course, you're a lot older than me, so it probably wasn't.
Well, Donnie Jones' parents own that.
I'll just tell this guy to hold up till maybe next time, 'cause I don't know if he's gonna pursue something on his own, which I guess he can.
Sure.
He is, we know what we could do or not do, so...
There's nothing, if it's on the corner, there's nothing he can do. Your dad.
No, he's not, he's farther down on Arthur Street, so it floods his backyard, but it's, 'cause it was up over its bank quite a bit, so it wasn't our combined sewer line problem, this was actual water just kinda like gone across forty-nine from the...
Any other committee reports? You can let Mike speak to the EMS.
Michael.
Yes.
Deep and light property question, how we doing with the road? I know it's been way too wet to do anything, but is, are we ready to go to bid?
No.
Our part of the night is the annexation.
Oh, as far as actual construction, it's been, two weeks ago, Corv engineer guy drove down, that Warren and I out there, they got concerns about the culvert, and he was gonna get back to us right away, but like I said, that's been two weeks ago. Industrial drive extension. We might need to get a special Corv engineer's permit for the culvert, maybe not.
Crossing that creek that I questioned when we allowed them to put that creek like that.
So, basically, till we hear back from them, can't do a whole lot. He's ready to go to bid.
I was in a meeting with him on Thursday afternoon, and when we were walking into the meeting, that's exactly what he told me, was that we're still waiting to hear back from the Army Corps of Engineers, but once that was done, either you gotta do the work to get the permit, or if he didn't need the permit, he was ready to go.
Okay. You're still hoping it's gonna get done in some way.
Well, yeah.
Anything in the planning, whether it be a boulevard in the center of the drive as you pull in, or off to one side or the other, is there anything in there that's allowing for a large sign? It's gonna have to fit in a strip of land we bought, so, which I don't think you're gonna fit much in there without blocking vision down there on forty-nine. We were stuck on the other end, we don't have, we can't put a sign on Musaragon, so we need to have a sign down there on forty-nine. Somehow, in the planning, this has to be incorporated, I just, I can't see putting that road in and not put a sign on it.
Well, I would imagine you don't have an industrial drive sign.
Well, that's probably something we're gonna have to come up with.
Not little speed sign up there, I mean, you need a big sign that...
Industrial park sign.
Yeah, we had, we had some examples.
Industrial park, land available for free and...
See, by the time you put the road, I don't know how much extra space you're gonna have once you get the actual road put, I mean, you go out, you can eyeball, it's just corn stuff right now. I guess we'll just have to figure out what kinda sign you want and where to stick it, but I hadn't thought of it as part of this project, and I don't think Warren is either.
But, but it has to be incorporated into it so that we allow ourselves a space for it. Like I say, we can't do the other end.
Okay.
He might wanna know what size you're talking about. I mean, I'll say something to him about, leave a spot.
Big and showy.
That narrows it down.
Well, next time you talk to Warren, bring that up, and I'm sure that we can accomplish that task. You wanna continue in with your report?
Uh...
As far as administration part goes on.
Yeah, the only thing, until we'll get to Ogen Street here in a couple of minutes, as far as legislation, MediaCom, I heard back from three of you, I didn't wanna reply with the one you have on three of the responses. I'm sure you're gonna be okay with the seventy-two fifty of five years, but I guess I'd like to get something on the record before I contact him tomorrow. I don't know why they waited four months to bring up what they did, but I think he'd be dumb-gone with a ten-year lease. I didn't think you wanted to budge on the money since we were going back and forth with them originally, but just so I got something on the record.
Excuse me. What is council's wishes? Five years, yeah. Okay, I've responded, right?
Yeah, I said I heard from three of the six, but I don't like to assume.
Okay.
Holders will stick to our guns.
All right. Anything else you wanna speak to, Ken?
Well, I'll just mention a safety story. On Ogen Street, since the commissioner is actually gonna own this project, that's why I wanted him to pass it as an emergency, so I could get the paperwork to them, so that they can do their thing and actually make the award. Other than that, I think that's, yeah.
All right, we'll turn it over to Troy.
First thing I have is Resolution two thousand fifteen dash eleven, first reading by caption only, a resolution accepting the annexation to the village of Hicksville of certain territory that the village of Hicksville petitioned to defiance county border commissioners to annex to the village and declaring an emergency. That's the industrial dive, commissioners have passed it. Seems kinda silly in this case, but we need to accept it, just like we would any other annexation.
I move, we suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion on the floor to suspend the rules by Mick McCrasky, Ron Jones second.
John second.
I mean, Ron Beverly seconds. Roll call, please.
McCrasky?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Second, third reading, Resolution two thousand fifteen dash eleven by caption only, a resolution accepting the annexation to the village of Hicksville of certain territory that the village of Hicksville petitioned to defiance county border commissioners to annex to the village and declaring an emergency.
Second. Ron Jones makes a motion, Mike Mar second. Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
favor?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
McCrasky?
Yes.
And then, Resolution two thousand fifteen dash twelve, first reading by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville Ohio to enter into contract with hole and brick excavating LLC for the replacement of the Ogen Street water line and declaring an emergency. That's what Kent was just talking about.
Contracts are ever used in Florida.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
He's good at, he did all that down there by the Federal Park and the fairgrounds last year. I move, we suspend the rule.
Ron Jones makes the motion, Ron Beverly makes the motion to suspend the rules on Resolution two thousand fifteen dash twelve.
Second.
Mike Mar second, roll call, please.
Beverly?
Yes.
favor?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
McCrasky?
Yes.
Jones?
So, second, third reading, Resolution two thousand fifteen dash twelve by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville Ohio to enter into a contract with hole and brick excavating LLC for the replacement of the Ogen Street water line and declaring an emergency.
Show move. Mick McCrasky makes the motion. Second, please.
Second.
Mike Bar second, roll call on Resolution two thousand fifteen dash twelve.
Favor?
Yes.
McCrasky?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Next thing I have, you'll see in your packet, there was an updated job description for the full-time EMT position. This is a job description that we tweaked. We had previously established this position several years ago, I think in two thousand eight, and then when there was some changes in the squad and the combination of positions, this actual position remains unfilled. So, it is an actual position, my research showed that the village is already created. Lonnie made some suggestions as far as the tweaking, primarily of which addressed the fact that we had to change the language that basically made it a straight first shift position to add some flexibility, because there's a chance, depending on coverage, that it may be, some, some days, maybe a first, or some weeks, maybe a first shift position, and some weeks, maybe a second shift type position. And then there were, just, we changed reports to the EMS chief and the fire chief and tweaked it from that perspective. The qualifications for the job have been changed, and ninety percent of it is basically established, obviously been approved, but I think if we're gonna, the two things that I came to the conclusion is if we're gonna go ahead and interview and fill that position, we need to have the job description approved, and then the next piece of legislate, which can just be done by somebody taking a vote and approving it, it doesn't need an actual resolution. And then the next resolution would be establishing the pay for that position, and then we'll have everything in order that if they wanna go out and interview and hire somebody, we got the position freed, we got the job description, we got the pay, they should be able to do that.
Fire committee had opportunity to communicate this before. Thanks for your time, Mike. Thank you, guys, thank you for your time. Thank you. Okay, Tom and Sandy, thank you for coming.
Thank you, I'll be waiting to hear from him.
You'll get a personal call.
I want an executive session to discuss that.
Replacing the other job description.
What's that?
Does it, is it replacing?
It is replacing the other job description?
No, I think we can approve the specifications on it, and I'd like to ask for an executive discussion later to discuss personnel issue.
My question is moving to tell the executive.
I have seen the draft.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, if everybody agrees with this and everybody's happy, then I make a motion that we suspend the rules.
No, just, you just have to make a motion to approve the job description. We haven't gotten to that yet. We've just done the job description.
Job description, you guys satisfied with the job description?
Seems appropriate. Someone make a motion.
Is acceptable to this, I don't need a motion. I'm gonna make a motion. Ron Beverly makes a motion on the job description for full-time position, and with the EMT full-time, basically, EMT full-time, we'll need a second. Ron Jones earns seconds, roll call, please.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. favor?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McCrasky?
He would've abstained, but I'll say yes.
I don't think he would.
Have I called?
Me.
Are you the last one?
I'm the last one.
Okay.
Yes.
So, then along with that is Resolution two thousand fifteen dash thirteen, first reading by caption only, a, a resolution establishing the pay rate for the full-time EMT position for the village of Hicksville Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Need a motion on Resolution two thousand fifteen thirteen to declare an emergency? Ron Jones makes a motion to suspend the rules on Resolution two thousand fifteen days thirteen.
Second.
Mark Haver seconds, roll call, please.
McCrasky?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
So, second, third readings of Resolution two thousand fifteen dash thirteen by caption only, a resolution establishing the pay rate for the full-time EMT position for the village of Hicksville Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Mike Bar makes a, makes a motion on Resolution two thousand fifteen dash thirteen, we'll need a second. Mick McCrasky seconds, roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
McCrasky?
Then ordinance two thousand fifteen should be zero nine, in, first reading by caption only, an ordinance authorizing the village clerk treasurer to transfer funds. Anybody has any questions about that, they asked Diane.
Zero nine, you said?
Yes.
You don't need it as an emergency, Diane?
No, I plan ahead.
I still move.
That's all your first reading.
Oh, zero nine.
And then, I know if Mike Barth wants to speak to the park lease issue, I know you sent some emails around, you and I've had a couple of conversations, that's relative to the amount that they pay the village for the use of facilities down in the park.
Right.
Which includes their electricity and water.
Pavilion.
Pavilion, and all that stuff.
Their different activities, and I know if they have extra ones every year and on, they have the, you know, the meats to those facilities and everything else that goes along with them. They're for an increase.
Currently is a thousand dollars and has been that way for several years, at least five years, at least for the last five years.
Of course, utilities have gone up since then, and then some of the supplies have gone up that they use, so we're basically asking for a twelve hundred and fifty dollar a year, a hundred and fifty dollar a year increase. Well, that's cheap enough.
The twelve hundred, that's what it's gonna be? The twelve hundred, that's what it's going to be? Twelve...
Well, we threw a number on, talked to the committee about it. Ken, I asked Ken because he kind of was pushing for, you know, wanting to do something different.
I just need to know what the number, what's the...
What committee is doing that?
This was the Water and Sewer Committee.
Fine.
I don't know. They just kept asking, we had talked about Park Board and we just had, you know, the Park Board looking at a contract and I said that'd be a conflict of interest if the Park Board came up with a contract because we simply, Park Board, so...
You're liaison, so they're doing the right thing there, bringing it back to the committee.
Right, so I thought that was, come through council and I said, well, I'll ask these guys what they thought. Council's got a decision overall anyway, so.
Well, you got to go front, that's the main thing.
Right.
Maybe we could, maybe we'll intertwine and do something for that property.
Oh, that's still on the talking board, so...
I've heard more about it. I mean, all the property.
Yeah, it's still on the talking board and the road.
Are we passing this a bit premature?
Well, it's expired.
Expired in March, so I don't know if it's premature. Like I said, I've brought it up a couple of different times. Thought I'd come up with a figure, everybody was okay with it.
Let's just, what's the majority of you think?
I mean, it's not really passing due because I'll have to bring back a resolution with the actual lease or whatever, so I guess...
I just thought it might be a leverage by four. And what you just said, you know, kicking a little bit on that road, certainly not.
Is the road being discussed?
I think it's been discussed.
Well, but it's discussed, but isn't it being discussed?
We haven't got it to meet yet. No, I'm still waiting for Steve. He keeps telling me he's going to get here.
It died.
Nah, it's not died.
I didn't think it died, so.
That's why we're all the way through. We're talking about...
Yep, resurface and...
All right. The other thing on my list, which I assume Diane put on there, has to do with the vacation policy of the village. She and I had had some discussions about that and I think it was based upon some employee requests. And I don't know if the Personnel Committee has looked at it or wants to look at it or whatever, but I think there's probably some decisions that need to be made on what the intent of our current policies and ordinance are and whether or not people have the right to cash in their unused vacation and the other things that go along with that policy. I'd be happy to provide my input to the committee or whoever, whoever that might be.
Well, that definitely should go to Personnel. Right. So why don't we have Personnel Committee, which is Mick, Mike and Bruce with Troy, take a look at this.
There's some things, there is definitely some things that need to be ironed out regardless of what people's inclination is as to whether or not you have to be able to do it or not. There's just, to make things consistent and make sure that it's clear, there's some...
Make sure it's right.
Right. I work for, you either take it or lose it. You can't...
Well, I think the county hasn't had a policy too, however, it's left up to the elected department.
That's pretty common policy anymore, though.
If the Personnel Committee is going to need, there's a few items that department has been bringing to my attention in the Personnel Manual that they would like changes made to them also, so...
Can I invite you to the meeting?
Well, I'd be fine, but I think the department heads also need to make a list of the things that they would like you to review and reconsider in the Personnel Manual so we can include that one.
All right. Before we get into police and fire, park, anything to report?
All the surveillance cameras are up and running.
Okay. Great. And you got your monitors?
Yeah.
That should help a lot. Well, pass on, thank you. You know, Mike Barth being a liaison is very appreciative along with council and the efforts from the park to the board to basically, anything that's been done down there has been running pretty smooth, so thank you.
Are there signs up? I've driven through the park a while. Are there signs up that let the would-be criminals know that they're on candid camera?
Can't answer that. I would thought maybe that was part of the program when you put up cameras, they have a sign, but I can't answer that.
Like, you know, this area is surveilled or...
Yeah.
I think it'd be a good idea if we don't, if we don't have them.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
But you see them up so often, is there a law that says you have to?
What's that?
Put a, put a note by the...
I think the sign maybe accomplishes more than the camera.
Right.
As long as it's not illegal.
All right.
I wouldn't think so.
What's going on, police?
I don't really have anything. Fireman's convention went well.
Right.
The relay for life, that kind of got rained on, but I think still went over good.
Mm-hmm.
But that's the only thing that I have.
Yeah, and part of my mayor's report, and there won't be anybody here to hear it, but I wanted to make sure that, you know, as a village, I thought with the fireman's convention was handled properly, the police could, you know, we didn't have any drivel issues. I had real good reports from a lot of people when I was up on the street and it really exemplified Hicksville. Everybody was very, very, I guess, well behaved, so to speak. And when I had to speak at the fireman's convention, I told them, I said, well, I probably won't have to say too much because maybe you're all asleep from Friday night activities, but it was well attended. And again, with the, you know, the relay for life, sometimes we get rain, but you got to applaud the people that stood out and raised that money and went through the storm. And I take my hat off to each and every one of them.
Well, Bruce Silk talked to him and he wasn't sure if Scott was going to be here. He wanted to let the council know, the fire department know how well the community received the convention and a big thank you to all who helped and participated and did everything they could to make the convention a success.
Well, thank you for that report. EMT, EMS, you've worked hard on this job description. We're going to have a little meeting here according to Mark, our executive session on Personnel. I'm sure that will probably be the topic, but thank you. And you have done a nice job bringing that to the forefront and worked hard to... Your report, if everybody has your report in your packet, it's very detailed and it's a good report. And then you want to bring forth EMT Cody Royer to be removed from probation. What exactly do we, we need to, I need to recommend he be removed from probation on your request and then we need a blessing from council. So we will need a motion.
I suggest that we take the mayor's recommendation and remove that gentleman from probation.
Okay, Mick has made the motion to go all of my recommendations for Cody Royer. Is that pronounced right?
Yes.
To be removed from probationary status. We'll need a second.
Go ahead.
Okay, Mike Bar, seconds. Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McCrasky?
Yes.
Bart?
Okay, great. Clerk Treasor's report, do you want to speak to that, Diane?
Well, you have a month-to-date, year-to-date cash report in front of you. I have any questions, I bet you can answer. Got a fund in the hole, but I'd get out the whole...
I don't think it's my fault, though.
There may not be. I'll check it then. And then you have a month-to-date, year-to-date cash report, which shows we're down twenty percent for the month of June of where we were last year, down one percent for the same time last year.
Do you know why that is? Why, two months in a row, we're down a lot? Are things, something changing or are we...
No, I don't, I don't really know.
It's a little long.
Jay is not at the exact spot in the collection process as far as where Zoe was, as far as following the non-fire bears and non-payers and, you know, whatever that can make a difference.
Is she getting along well on its own job?
He, just as a side note, he's going to income tax conference in Columbus later this week. It's an annual income tax conference where I'm having, you know, keep updated on this House bill, changes and stuff and see what everybody's got to say about it, how they're going to get their stuff, you know, updated in time. But, you know, he's learning. He's, he just...
All right, before we go into executive session, we have the mayor's court report, which is in your packet. We also, like I mentioned to, when the chief spoke, thank you to the village employees, the Hicksville Fire Department, Hicksville Police Department, the EMT Squad for their tireless work handling the fireman's convention, the relay for life and the recent floodwaters in and around Hicksville. Thank you. And with that, we'll need a motion if we're going to go into executive session.
A motion, executive session regarding Personnel.
All right, Mark Haver makes a motion.
We don't want to work specifics about Personnel to keep us in...
All right, we'll change it. But it can be Personnel, but you have to be, you're talking about hiring, firing...
Hiring, firing.
Hiring, firing.
Hiring, firing, I'll get right to that. Motion to go into executive session.
Or do we say it, saved or created?
Personnel as far as hiring and firing. Ron Beverly, seconds. Roll call, please.
McCrasky?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
favor?
Yes.